The United States of America. To the Republic like the British stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the virginity of justice and all.
Here.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Any other visitors to declare? There are none. Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion. Very.
Motion of the second. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You approve the match?
There is a second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve. Are there any visitors to be heard? Welcome. I didn't make copies of the attachments for anybody because we want to cut down more trees, but it does. It makes it complicated. The chair has the attachments if you're interested in. Morning. My name is Robin Shiro. I live at Key Lively East Washington in Elkhorn. And although I worked in engineering field for over forty years, have to graduate from South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. With dual engineering degrees, I was recently operating accepted a customer service job with the Internal Revenue Service. First, I would like to say that I appreciate all that you do since I was a previous county commissioner myself. In fact, I was awarded the two thousand and eight United States County Official Leader from National Association of Counties. So I surprise one year Clay County, South Dakota Deputy State's Attorney, Deputy Mayor requested a mental evaluation on me. Prior to me making a plea and paid for by the county to the tune of three thousand plus dollars for the evaluation. For an illegal arrest by Clay County, South Dakota Sheriff Andy Howe. Not a great use of taxpayer dollars, would you say? Or as a previous county commissioner, I would say an abuse of taxpayer dollars. Because the mental evaluation, of course, showed that I am confident this. So you wasted your. Would it surprise you that the Clay County, South Dakota Deputy? Attorney that wrote, excuse me, deputy that wrote my arrest report was actually on vacation at the time of my arrest? So who from Clay County actually wrote that report? That deputy supposedly wrote my arrest report had on a uniform that was probably five sizes too small. Back to his vest ended just underneath his chest, so he was actually no best from there to his waist. Why? Well, I might note that two attorneys, one being a long time previous state attorney from Clay County. Warned me that it should not have been had to spend three and a half days in my campaign suit in jail in the Clay County for that arrest. Because without ever being arrested before, I should have been released on my own. Would it surprise you that I was drugged, poisoned, tortured, and raped while in Clay County Jail during that time? I filed torture and rape charges shortly after I was in Clay County Jail with the city of Elkhorn first. Arrest was supposedly for a bench warrant served by April thirtieth. For an illegal speeding ticket by a person that said he was city of Deadwood police officer sitting on the same side of the road as me and in front of me. On June two thousand and twenty-three. But it was not a city police officer, so when I tried to pay the speeding ticket to Deadwood, I could not pay that speeding ticket because it was never filed. Being the good citizen that I am, I went to court on the day set for the ticket. Even though it was never filed because I could not pay the speeding ticket without being filed with the police officer and serving this speeding ticket did not show up in court. Therefore, the judge tried to continue the case, but as you all know. And as city police chief Rich Haddad, he ordered sue and is also union counties. Told me that it's an illegal bench warrant for this speeding ticket gets thrown out because there's much of point of order. We generally allow five minutes and I did only five and you're not, so I wanted to let you know that you've got like another minute to sort of summarize. Right, I'm not, I'm okay. After being the county commissioner, I know how it works. Thank you very much. So Union County also stated that the same couple of weeks ago. So speeding ticket was never, I never showed up, I mean, I showed up in court. And I was having to plead my case not being able to pay for the speeding ticket, so it was never filed. So you might ask yourself how a bench warrant was first served in your county, union, and then in Clay County also. A year later for a speeding ticket that was thrown out. Well, it's because I was running through office. Would it surprise you that a bench warrant that Andy Howe certainly showed both my birth date and my driver's license? Which proved that it's an illegal bench warrant because it's identity fact. So there's other things, since you hired the state's attorney, because they're in your budget and the public defender. I have other things to go into. I'll let you read them. I won't waste your time. I appreciate all that you do. But I think we should look into these items because they're a waste of taxpayer dollars and you're in charge of those taxpayer dollars. Have a happy new year. Thank you very much and a safe new year. Thank you. Thank you. Any other visitors to be heard? Hey, there. I'll leave it. It's your.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we start out with Earl Wilson.
Yeah, we got. Okay. The last time we explained it, I believe. But it wasn't on the agenda. So. Everything is still the same, so I. Think if you approve it.
I think the question last week was that there is no pipe size on there?
Yeah.
And.
Well, I think I told you last time it was a four inch tile, eight inch tile, going in twelve inch. And tape.
So we can change the. Application and add those things?
It was.
Yeah, I guess I have it on, I have it on again. Eight inch tile to a ten inch plastic.
Yeah, it doesn't, it didn't have the, the black side of mine.
Oh. Table, pipe, or tile size, it just had pipe. So is that what should be eight inch?
Right, and then I had on the original here, I have eight inch pipe. For the tile size and the casing size is ten inch. Thing I changed is it's a ten inch steel instead of plastic pipe.
Alright.
So I recommend you approve it. And I have a check if you want to approve our own Volson's right away application for tiling. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Why is the check for two?
Um. On the. Right away and the morning. Right.
One hundred and twenty-five is that way special on the line? So we're doing. We're not going to work.
No, actually. No, actually, it shouldn't be one hundred and fifty. I mean, one hundred and twenty-five.
So we can still approve it. Twice, twice in size.
Here's.
Yeah.
Yes, I.
Appreciate the donation.
Yeah. No, I don't want to. I'll make sure I get that.
Any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Which is carries.
Do you on that permit? Do you have the? Page? Or you design on various?
No, the copy that I got was cut off. Yeah, I don't have that to play.
Yeah. That wasn't on that permit, huh?
The scan that I got was cut off on the upper page.
Sure you get that new one.
Well, if there's any way I can get it, I'm in the business today.
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll bring the sign sheet. Should be able to print one off.
If you bring it here, I can.
We should be able to go upstairs and print it off the internet. I was thinking. Cause the permit is on our website, so.
What we think of the right away? Right. Erin Van De Bosh's West End Sparring driveway application and reversing rule.
We, I believe you have already approved this except for we had table it because we didn't have checks in our hands. But that afternoon of the last meeting, the check stayed in the mail.
This one we didn't approve. This is on university. When we approved is on field board.
Oh, okay, okay.
This should be.
Okay, I recommend you approve.
Yes. Move to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I have somebody.
Yeah, I have. And then we have Erin Van De Bosh's right away.
And so I have a question. He filled one out. But I don't believe we've ever listed for ditch readings. Did we just start changing that as to be a right away permit? Or we've always let them do it as long as they do it to our specifications and receive it, so.
They had to.
Yeah, and he did. Larry and Brent went and met with him. So and he, he sent it to him and I thought I might have missed something.
Is this on three oh four though?
And then, no, this is at the same spot, the university where he's put the code in.
So no, I mean, the clean out.
Yeah, I, I thought so he. Yeah. I didn't know if there was some reason why he sent it in, because he sent out and filled out right away. One and I couldn't figure out why and I thought. You know, we just been doing those burn movies and we, they gotta let us know and we keep an eye on. So, okay, so that we skipped that and.
So if you do talk to him, he'll remember. Just remind him that he does have to ask first.
Yeah, and I think he, he been in touch. I don't know, it's been a couple of weeks now, but.
Maybe that's where he thought he didn't send the other hundred and twenty-five bucks. Well, I don't know. What are the permits? What were the checks? Or it was the one that, oh, excuse me, that was it. Yeah.
Yeah, there was two seventy-five dollar checks here, one from three oh four. University.
Then we are on to the diaphragm.
Yeah, something we talked about this a while back about maybe putting a underground cave in up there so we could. Go after calls so often and have take advantage of the license and. I was kind of shocked at the cost of it. And that doesn't include electrician or someone to certify to put it in.
We can't put it ourselves?
Well. Dr. North didn't really want to. So if we did this, Dr. North would be like the primary contractor, need some contractor, which, you know, we got a couple and then. He looks for the certification on what it is. Now, when we replaced the tanks at, for million shop in two thousand and one. That they were retired to have somebody. I guess qualified, certified, I actually don't know what it is. But other than us, and at that time, we didn't have the equipment anyway. But this would be a different fuel system than just electric pump. You know, they'd have to put their. Savings label at the shop, their ID number, their social number, what vehicle and what pump. And all that's included, but it's electrical stuff. We're gonna have blue barrels if we do this. We went through the budget and. There is enough in the equipment budget to cover. This much and another fifty, forty thousand. But I don't have an estimate on what it's gonna cost for the rest, but it's just, we're just asking, what do you think? Is this? Something we want to continue with or look at a different type of system or?
I think the, the, the sense behind it would be cost savings in the long term, so we want to know something about how long it would take to become a bargain.
Right, the, you know, we usually save. Kind of like. Ten to fifteen cents by hitting a tanker load. You know, so we got a fuel hole coming up and that was for a tanker load. But I guess not looking for a answer today is. It has probably about forty grand more than not as expected. I can't just buy a tank from doors.
Yeah, down here it says.
And that little eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifteen cents.
So though.
Yeah, the third page, three quarters way down.
And that's then, that's an estimate, so it also says we'll bill an actual cost, so.
Yeah, that was, that was my concern is that, you know, that this, this quote was good for fifteen days and then. And so we'll bill, so we don't, we don't know what it would actually be. The other thing is that the last time I dealt with underground storage tank was a long, long time ago. But there were EPA regulations at that time that required inspection and so forth, so.
And we're pretty big. We don't have an underground tank up there.
Oh, it's not underground?
No, it's above ground, so there won't be any contaminated. So the state had a program back in two thousand. That's how we got the one done at the shop. And they had. Quite a bit of contaminated dirt, dirt, oil to the windmill, whatever it was up there. But these are true programs. We, we have three thousand gallon capacity right now during the winter. Well, of course, so far this winter, it ain't been bad, but you know, it usually lasts us a month. So then you gotta keep getting. Gives and, you know, but that's weird. Wanted this out in front and, you know, I don't know if, you know, we want to look at. But there really isn't any other alternative. Back in north is about the only one. In this area, I mean, once you get to Minneapolis, Kansas City, Omaha. And they deal with two north tanks. So the tank we did, we already have bids. We buy out that bid that way. I like two north, we do this, but they pass it on to back in order.
So what's just the tank?
You know, no. There's quite a bit. You know, now they're double wall. They weren't before. Now they're double wall and. If we don't have monitoring system up there, so that's a big cost. We have a monitoring system at the shop. That reads out every day and then, you know, we got a. Uh, state's outgoing comes around. The A and R now comes around checks. We have to keep those little tests. And they'll just randomly pick a day and we gotta show them that the leak test that tells us how many gallons of fuel are left. And it warns us when we're getting low. Oh, that's included plus a dispensing system. But no, there's not, this was just more of a. Estimate to see if we even wanted to. To do any part of it. So. We get a breakdown sheet and like she said, it's only good for fifteen days. That's all we're looking for. I mean, it's already, I believe, expired.
Yeah, a couple of days.
Fifteen, I guess, yeah. So, man, I wasn't looking for no motion. I just wondered if what you thought. I mean, it was, it would be convenient. And, you know, like you wondered how many, you know, it'd take quite a bit. For it to be for itself, imagine.
Billion gallons.
Nine gallons at fifteen cents.
Or ten. Fifteen would be easier.
But I guess, you know, I wasn't. Looking at that so much as not having to call through. Fuel, like we, we filled everything up here a couple of weeks before it got cold. But we'll have to do it if we, we had to go out and do some sanding. And if we get some snow, that's thirty dollars a gallons between four piece of equipment doesn't last very long.
So it'd be. Five hundred to a thousand months. Yeah, I'm getting like three thirty-three I got there. So, yeah, we're talking about twenty-seven years. I hit the minimum.
So the tapes that are at the Bavarian shop. They went from three thousand, a thousand and three thousand underground bound to two. Thousand and ten thousand in two thousand and one. So they've been in the ground. For going on twenty-four years. Everything's good. They get tested every year. They require to be tested. So I mean, longevity, I would think this tank are way better than ones we got now. You won't have to worry about cost in the future, but I know that's a lot of money per fuel.
So I did the math wrong. It'd be seven years to pay off. At the hundred and eleven thousand. So that's not put in. It's an estimate, so. At fifteen cents. At fifteen cents. So you took. You took a hundred and eleven thousand and fifteen cents. How many, how many gallons in a month were you figuring? This is just in the condo shop. Are you saying three K or? No, that's all they have up there. Okay. What, what, what's the monthly fuel usage into a condo shop?
Well, if I did a normal winter, it's forty-five hundred. You know, we did put that two thousand gallon tank up there about ten, twelve years. So in other words, it's every other week for a thousand gallons. Well, we have snow, which I'm assuming. We will later on, but and then in the summertime, when we're hauling gravel, everybody just sweeps in their, fills a truck up. You know, so it varies. I would say probably fifteen hundred gallons to two thousand a month.
And that could be low, so you have to change those gallons then. Yeah. No, we should, I wonder, rather than doing math with the bench here, we should be able to just. If put together a spreadsheet or something, it kind of gives us a timeline.
We used up there last year.
Yeah, just looking at.
Easy enough.
Yeah, were, were we to have this, this infrastructure, what will be, you know, the cost savings and how long would it take to, to, to keep money ahead, so? If it's a five or seven year, you know, horizon, then that's a little different than thirty years.
I asked the local contractor, you know, what it would cost and he needs to see breakdown sheet. So he needs, you know, because it has to be undercut by two feet, I believe, and filled with P rock for it to sit on and. You know, so there's quite a bit of different things in there to be done, so I don't know what. I was thinking fifty, sixty thousand installed with electrical and I could be way off on that. I have no idea. That's something that I don't deal with.
Away and they'll just go with real, real generous, you know, contingencies.
Yeah, I would tell you a high. And be thirty thousand short.
Yeah, you want to get together and pencil out some numbers, give me your ring and just, just look at what kind of background we're talking about.
But that's, that's what I did. I know we talked about this couple of months ago, back in north, which helped to get it.
So next item is the fuel quote for the Bavarian shop and that is also. Like it was Jerry's service from Brittany to Nebraska, two dollars. And fifteen point three cents.
Move to Ruth.
Sorry. There's a motion on the second to approve. Further discussion?
Is it, is that straight number two?
Yeah.
Now, do you need the P forty? You don't need it?
No, it'd be, we, yeah, this is number two in that. So. Yeah, before, maybe before he accepted, it was. Twenty cents higher than P forty.
Oh, so this bid is just straight two?
Yeah, this bid is straight two.
I just saw you lost the P forty that I was.
Right, you know. I should have circled the.
Okay.
The number two down.
Further discussion? There are none. Opposed and favorite say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have an agreement with the, with terms of an agreement with the city of, with the San Luis streets.
So this is kind of just. Man of every goal because I live up there and. But she is out here in a couple of three months. Was some stuff at Facebook. About all of a sudden the county's going down to Killip. Which didn't settle with me, so from now on, we met with the city board. And they agreed to this terms of, I mean, it's just a handshake agreement. I don't think we need a contract myself. But they're gonna, they have to call us if they want sanding down. And as of yet today, we haven't heard a tone call yet. And all the Sanders are back in the shop. So, but we're just gonna charge you for. What salt tank we use if we're out sanding. I'm not gonna charge him for the truck and the sander, but we'll charge him for the operator. Otherwise, we're already out there anyway. So, but yeah.
So essentially what we're doing here is we're saying the rates.
Correct. We've never been reimbursed. We've never been reimbursed before. The principal, the superintendent of the school always told me. They were not having school. There's what we call a bus loop. Out there, so to make sure all the kids. Lot of the buses show up there and then they gotta go to the arena. So to make sure that was safe, we will usually hit main street lightly. That's all we did. But seeing how. Everybody's not happy with the way we do it. We're gonna do it this way from now on. And I won't be up there. I don't expect them to drive all the way to Wakanda to see if they need. Say we don't sand any other towns unless asked. We try to help them out. City of Reno has their own standard. We offer them a pickup sander that we don't use anymore and they, they don't want to do that, so.
So do these charges cover our costs?
Yeah. Yeah, we're not gonna make any money, but they're covering that cost.
I guess my only question is whether a sign, whether asking their city council to sign an agreement would be better, but. We can certainly try it this way for you. Right?
Since there is. You know, reimbursement stuff without a signed contract, is there, is this open to standing liability?
I mean, that's my concern. It's always better to have it written so they get that.
They say, well, they.
Right. So maybe. Attorney's Office fifteen. Wait, I wait and come up with an agreement and request. Along these lines, exactly.
Just in case something ever comes up and they start hollering for some reason, they hate this is what I'm supposed to do. That's what you're on next for.
Then we've got the federal highway map approval for the city of Vermillion boundaries.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, it took a little bit. Yeah, I think, oh, yeah, this was something that I wasn't familiar with. We haven't reviewed these previously. So it's just happened periodically. They. Redefined and this, this seems like it's primarily related to funding, right? So what entities run what? So we're, we're trying to get funding for roads.
We did, we did that five-year. Transportation plan through the state in federal highway, like a couple of years ago, I suppose. And this was included in that. And so there was a couple of roads on the old map that still is under the counties. And they've taken them off this map now. One of them was the road going north of Walmart. Up to the old bridge. That used to be on the map. That was still on the list. Part of Crawford was on the list. So that's what this is, how this came about to get rid of those.
And this is something that was then sent from the state DOT at the behest of the federal. DOT and then the city of Vermillion has already reviewed it and they think this all is fine.
Yep, the guy that's in charge of this is. Larry, Larry Dean from South Texas State DOT.
And it, it doesn't seem to, you know, this doesn't seem to. You've got, you've got census boundaries listed. You've got city limit boundaries for taxation purposes. And it doesn't seem like it affects either of those. This is a separate, separate map. So it's not gonna change either of those maps correctly. Yeah.
I guess the only thing we've noticed was that part of. Downway of Gulf Course. It says we'll be excluded from urban limits now, but the red line gets covered up. On your layer. Goes down the center of the road. So.
I think that'd be my one concern is that I wouldn't want to have anything that is our responsibility. End up within city limits and make it harder to get grant funding. Yeah.
It, that part hasn't been a problem with it. That little stretch of road's been a problem for. A long time, basically since the Hilton House is down there. And they run the, the line right down the center of the road. They don't wanna, city didn't want to go by the county rules for the driveways put in for that addition. But then when it comes to working on the other side of the road, we had to get engineer studies to prove to. That the water wouldn't run uphill, you know, so I spent, but we go fall snow on it. But this morning, he said there, they were sanding down there, so. It, it, it's been like that since I worked here. I mean, shouldn't say it's been like that since we built the Gulf Course. So, but that doesn't have any bearing on the funding because we have the. The road listed in peer from that crosswalk at the bottom of what is a university. What, what comes out there is, yeah, so. That's where our road ends at that crosswalk for the white path.
Okay.
And it changes. Right, there's concrete bypass and the other side is theirs. And we start plowing on the way out. Which now they put it on the, they annexed it on the south side of that out there. Going ways for some reason, the city did here, they're in the process of doing that.
And which, what, what's actually the name?
It was like from that walkway from Crawford West.
Okay.
South side of the road, they're doing something. And we're privy to that stuff. But as far as I mean, our roads and stuff, this is basically. Got rid of that gravel road. That used to be called the Omide Road. County still has that, no records is, we used to have to blade it from. When the city road goes east all the way up to the, where they took the bridge out. I'm gonna say that's on. In signing that before, have we? But are they asking?
Larry said, when he called me about this. He said every so many years they have to do it.
But you're talking Larry Dean?
Yeah.
And it looked from the letter, like they were looking for a formal approval.
Yeah, for us.
Brother here let Jason through Mayor Cole. So they, they got the same map, I'm assuming?
Yeah, they have the same map and then there's a, there's a spot down in the corner of the map where they want signatures from each.
Oh, yeah, it does say, say you. And then Larry will sign it, so. Is that their, that must be, oh, was there two maps in the envelope?
He sent me another one.
Yeah, the first one was the electric one. Thomas, you look like.
I'm just trying to figure it out what they're. Well, I mean, the biggest thing to me is why is the twenty thirteen? And they've got the proposed urban boundary meets up with twenty thirteen. Except for two spots. I was wondering what, what changed there?
Yeah, the coloring, coloring is not real good. I, I would, I would rather saw a line. Or take a color line everywhere.
I guess why, I can't figure out is one property road. So it does look like the twenty thirteen urban boundary, I don't know, how, how far do you think that is? From Crawford to where they're, the twenty thirteen urban boundary.
Of course.
What am I, yeah, so then why is Crawford Road excluded from the roads?
Uh, I don't, I don't think Crawford Road is, is that it's. Just that.
Excluded is the Burbank Road east-west from, right from that point.
Where are you looking at?
I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yeah, north of the bypass, so that's.
Oh, yeah, that goes up to. That piece, south of the Burbank Road where the university comes in. That, that must be what they're talking about. It's in the city limit boundaries review that light, I call it, land very purple or whatever. I think that's what they're. Did they want to sign a plan for that? Did you have a?
Cause they had a pipe go through there, I suppose they want.
What was that? Or the pipe for the street? Okay, okay.
So then this is then also updating the state's interpretation of what is city and what is. Is not basic that.
Yeah, basically this came about because the city still had the county being in charge of these roads.
Yep.
The way, the way I determined the reason that come up.
And so, so there's no disagreements between our highway department and their roads and this aligns with.
No, I don't, I don't think there's any disagreement at all. The way I understood it was Larry, so they just have to do this every so many years for the. The federal highway system.
And, and I guess I think my question is that this, this then aligns with yours and the city's current understanding of what's got what? That's the, that's probably the bottom of it.
Actually had to get done after it showed up on that. Transmaster transportation plan we did, then it had to get done. And it's just taken this long. Larry's.
Authorizing a signature one here or? Yeah, well, yeah, so I, I moved to authorize the chairs assigned, be updated at each.
Here's a second.
Second.
That's, you look like you're still.
Certainly talk about it. It's just, you know, excluding the roads. That's the only problem. I mean, if it borders the city, it should be half theirs and that borders.
Yeah.
They don't seem that way.
Should be done like New Yankton County or the county line. One entity's responsible for a certain length of the road and the other for the other half. That's the easiest way for maintenance and, and, and also for grant purposes.
Even when Raleigh was here for the city.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta go that way. You know, are we supposed to break it, plow it up? Get to the other side of the Gulf Course. You know, I said, well, we'll plow. We can plow out in Burbank and you guys gotta go down and do Natalie Court, whatever else. You can plow that. Back, but we're usually back first and it just. Like you said, the county line, that's a little easier.
Yeah.
Nine miles of gravel, nine miles of old oil, swap it every two years.
Yeah.
That, that works good. Which one's in charge of the oil for next two years? That switch is every even number, every other or every even number you get.
Yeah.
So twenty-six will get the.
But then when you have to fix it, you split the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, any, anything done gets split. That's never been a problem. And has been since, I think I founded nineteen forty-two or fifty-one. I mean, this has been a long time.
I, I noticed that on this map, the, one of the places, maybe I've missed others, but there's a spot out on three seventeen on the. Northeast corner of the city that, that says that the. Uh, road is excluded from urban limits. And I wouldn't want that. Swampy township gravel road. So I wouldn't want to be responsible for that either. So I can understand that issue there.
So that would be back to the township.
That's gnarly townships.
Yeah, yeah, so that three seventeen, that would be, that would be a township.
Right, yeah.
But just because it says it's excluded, doesn't, goes back to that. County system, which Burbank goes in.
Right. And that's what the other split space that I saw where. The road is excluded from urban limits. It's over on Burbank Road.
And then you can see where they got the city limits out there. They actually have the whole road.
Yeah.
On University of DeKalb. And. That first place on the north. At that intersection, we had a problem with that in June, if you remember. And the guy said, ask me, how come you're out here? I'm in the city limits. Right there is the city limits state and the driveway question. Up there, the next time I went out there, the city was out pumping the water to the other side of the driveway.
Yeah.
Cause it was full of rock and stuff.
They saw that. So. So there are just a few spaces there where they didn't want to be responsible for that road.
Next time I'll set the bathroom. That's all we have. I just was here some voice.
So, do we need a vote on this?
Yeah.
Motion second.
Yep, yes.
So, if there's no further discussions, hold on some time to say hi.
Hi.
I'll give you, I see you got. Something to pay for for Ireland that she can sign, right?
Yeah. It actually. But it does have a second sheet, which is what you need.
Yeah.
I think first we got, we got a few other things, right? Oh, that's on here. I thought that was. That's what we're ready for. Yeah, are we, where are we at? We have to decide by fifteen. I'm, I know I'm. Whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, I, I guess I would propose that we. Allow the next commission to make that decision. I'm not prepared today to do that. And I think, you know. Study that one. I mean, there are no, there are no right answers, right? I mean, I, there are none, none of those roads. Which is, which is the worst, which, you know, we have to think about representation. You know, and I think we need to, we don't know what it's to the, you know, the townships as well.
We also had some questions that Michael's gonna look into, but you know, I had a. Brief to you on those yet about taking sure that we're within statute. If we approve any of these applications, most of them had some, some areas where they didn't align with. At least if administrative.
Yeah, probably ought to go to the first meeting. In January because if there is still questions. The division would have time, the commission would have time to want to get those answers. It, it, it's a tough one because every township needs help. There are no, there are no applications there. Okay, so.
So that will, we'll be looking at those at the first meeting of the year. And maybe encourage Michael like ahead of that so that we know whether we're ready to go or if we need to ask anybody to, I mean, I guess. Yeah, we'll just need to find out. But I just, I, I have concerns when we've got. Three times as many ads or four times as many asks as we have dollars available, but we make sure that we're just being really careful in process on all those. People might have grounds.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, when, you know, that, that maybe we can, that will help to answer some of those questions. It's not gonna be that easy.
Grab?
Yeah.
Right, so.
So I would've got trade-in values.
So I went and got uh trade in values. He's in the income for the lotus.
All right.
Uh, one is worth sixty five hundred rating. Let's say two thousand fourteen. Uh, the two thousand eighteen, they were around ninety three hundred. The city of Waukano would like to buy one. But I'm just wondering if those prices are okay with which everyone may decide on. Or if you want more or someone will do them.
I think, I think that's good for it. These markets going.
And then the other question was my old trailer, which is like two thousand seven, recently. Um, whether or not Scott in the park ultimately will buy that or sort of policy.
Do you still need the trailers, Scott?
Yeah.
It's in your somewhere.
I thought, I was kind of thought that was a done deal. So it just needs new flooring in it. Yeah.
You just need new flooring in it, or did you want to extend the tongue and axles? For bigger axles under it.
That's beyond my expertise.
Because the flooring actually isn't that bad on it. No.
Nothing.
My issue with it was the axles are three thousand pound axles, and that's what each cabota weighs empty. So I was taking various tires out of um, and then the tongue was reinforced, so we got um, catching the um, tailgate of the cabanas on the corner of the, we got very few chores.
Just probably need to look at the weight of that machine and everything, I suppose, and
because I.
So maybe we talk about putting new axles under it.
Yes, we, we did, I think, discuss that and I can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what brand is that trailer?
Country think. Easy to achieve. But yeah, Jeremy or Twelve Kings. But Rogue King was Yankton, give him an estimate of.
Yeah.
Takes it, but that, I'm easily wondered is that a sale to the Corinels? Is that just a view? Two, so I wonder about it.
You talking about the weight of that tool cat, Scott?
Yeah.
Fifty six hundred pounds. It's, it's, that's.
So I'd say thousand. Because you got two, three thousand on it now.
Two, three thousand? Well, I thought it was just three thousand.
No, that's two.
It's pretty cool.
It's all just county property, right? Yeah, but it's going to affect his budget, you know, because he's expecting. We might have to do a budget transfer or something. It wouldn't be a sale from ourselves.
What we've done in the past is just had, for example, the courthouse pay for a portion of the bill for the. Rather than doing kind of a, a transfer, um, because we can't really transfer from one budget to the other, but we can take a portion of that purchase. And then we, we've, we've done that before, like the assessment office would, um, you know, buy a vehicle from the sheriff's department. I probably would handle that.
In this particular case, is there enough building Scott's budget to do that? That's another question, I guess.
I will think we did anything with the pickup. Give the, give the pickup, no?
Merry Christmas.
Next word you have to give away is.
That's what you're just wondering, we're talking about the budgets, I didn't know how that.
I did have enough money in my original budget, budget for a trailer. So.
I think.
Yeah.
And then come back to us. We'll get the, we'll get the money figured out, you know, what kind of attachments are we going to paint on that tool cat and everything?
We have a front mower or something, because that's going to add a thousand fifty now.
But I mean, figure out what it's going to cost to upgrade axles and everything versus a new one.
To extend the tongue and upgrade the axles to.
Each thousand each.
Is uh just over thirty six hundred dollars. Thirty six or seven.
No, the tool cat street legal, so, but you know, to break down, you got to pull it smart and get it repaired.
Oh, could be a lot worse.
How do we do the sale to the city of Waukano and just build like we've built the cut edges and stuff that are already buying from us?
We just have to surplus it.
Oh, yeah, that's, you gotta, yeah. But I don't know about that. You need to surplus it.
Yeah, but just figure out, I mean, lots of surplus, both of them, I would assume.
So you wanna, do you want to put that on us? I got enough, we got enough equipment, taking your, it's like you probably get another surplus sale next, you know, probably looking at June, May, June, so I don't know. And I got a little list after the first year. The surplus too, but would you want him to do? I think Waukano is going to buy the older one, boy, they talk.
And then the other one, the way, the way I understand from Polanski's, if I do trade in him, they'll have to rewrite everything.
They usually give their deal. So they cash surplus.
Yeah, definitely. And as far as both can rebuild in the trailer, they did good work. I've had a good number of kickers play out. And that's a pretty decent price. You, you wouldn't be able to touch a, a trailer that has the additional carrying capacity that he needs uh for anywhere near that. And they don't age out other than putting rubber, rubber on them.
So did you, you have to move into Clarion's surplus?
Well, we're gonna have that on the end again.
Oh, yeah.
And do that first year thing, the first one in January. There are motions to go into ditch board.
Move to go into ditch board, sorry.
Motion, I mean, I can just go into ditch board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We're in ditch board. Uh, we got invoices from Pullman Excavation. For the first one is for uh removal washed out by installation in forty eight inch by seventy point one G. I'm a plate grid bitch. Oh, because if you want to do it together, that's fine. Just lost my page. Uh, let's say we're on twenty four. The other invoices coming log jam the four fifty eight.
Nineteen, they're eighty two dollars.
Yeah, for the second one.
So I think a motion that can actually come both voices that's fifty five, seventy.
I'm moving. Motion, second. In a second. Oh, I confused on where we were in there, yeah. We need to see these separate ones, game and clay, or again, game and clay dish and the other ones.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll, I'll, I'll move that, please, a pre. For um.
Second, I have motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Go on, game and clay ditch.
I think there'd be a proofing embrace for the.
I have motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Anything else for ditch board?
You have four fifty eight, set one south of lies. On the Yankton Clay where it was backed up all up to that pipe.
Yes.
On the west. Trying to remember the word. That was that.
Something else for ditch board when I take a motion to come out? A motion come out of ditch board, second. A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. We're in another session.
So this is a public hearing. A public hearing for the county budget supplement. I have not received any comments. Um, just wanted to know that what I advertised, we ended up needing less, so we don't have to take that forward. That was that.
So the numbers that are in our packet have been the less.
Right, the resolutions that I sent out in the revised packet yesterday are the final.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so instead of that long red, just the forty point. Um, okay, if there are no comments, then uh we do a motion to improve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty two for a budget supplement eighteen thousand five hundred forty one dollars.
Sorry.
There's a motion in seconds. Discussion. And I just want to be a real call.
Yes.
You leave?
Yes.
Yes, very long.
Yes, yes. It's online.
Okay, so we have the jail meal dinner award. Any of you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I um, I was just going to touch base on that. If you recall, Pizza Ranch had the six dollars a meal. Uh, they were our only bidder. Uh, the bid laws don't require us to bid this. Uh, now the limit for contracts is fifty thousand dollars a year. I don't anticipate our jail meals, uh, at least for this first half to, to reach that threshold, but uh, we considered other alternatives. Uh, the other alternatives are essentially um shopping around, uh, you know, picking up frozen meals, uh, you know, sandwiches or something like that, but each, each um each vendor we use, we'd have to arrange for tax exemption and, and uh, in the end, I think the Pizza Ranch option, even though it's considerably higher than uh, we planned for, we paid in the past. Um, hopefully with our uh reduced population, we're feeding these days and the fact that we only are offering this for the first six months of the year, um, I guess I'd recommend that we accept that.
There. We'll, we'll accept Pizza Ranch. I'll say.
There's a motion in second to accept, you know, bit of work. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the second item uh was the Charles Mix coming in the boarding contract, which looks like it's the same as last year.
Yeah, they, Charles Mix is a, there are little ways out for us in terms of a distance and lots of the times that we um we house at Charles Mix is when we'll have a person that's picked up there on a probation violation and they generally will impose a, maybe a two day hold. Uh, rather than going to get them, we just pay Charles Mix to hold that person for us and, and then they let them back out. So in that case, that would be a boarding situation and, and uh that's most commonly when we use them. There have been times we have an inmate that just, uh, we can't find a bed for elsewhere. We do uh drive them over there and they're pretty accommodating to us. We don't use them a lot because of the distance. Uh, but it is good to have that contract and they've been, uh, been agreeable to work with. So I'm happy to, happy to um recommend approval of that one.
Motion.
So moved second.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, Scott. Entryway project bid specifications.
They have a little project here. Um, it's way under that hundred thousand dollar threshold. So they won't, we don't need live bids, I thought, live bids just become more competitive, see what's out there. Uh, both the south and east enters are in bad shape and need to be replaced. The doors are metal, the bottom is shot, can't put wires good anymore. The outsides are wood. I couldn't tell last time I installed, I don't know when that was installed, anyone know? He's been around here for a while. Uh, but the woods crack and then gap and you need to see daylight through it. It's just time to replace both ends. And you're probably looking at between like forty five, fifty thousand dollar project on both ends. So I think I got a bid on that south one around thirty. So, you know, the opposite east is half the size, so. Anyway, uh, so that's why I just thought I put out the public bid. Instead of going different contractors, we'll see what's out there. Not sure if we need approval on that or not, but since it's not public bid, we'd have to bring it, then bring it to board, so.
Those parts of bids being received by the county. Did we change that to like the five P M on the day before the June? Because I have it at nine fifteen. Nobody's in your office for some reason. We're down here.
We're not going to do that.
That way it's, it's in there. Yeah, Harry's not scrambling, that's definitely.
Yeah, so maybe the person who makes the motion can include that, that it be not rated in five. Yeah. On the twenty ninth day of January. Or twenty, I'm sorry, twenty seventh day of January.
I'll make that motion.
The motion, third second.
Second.
The motion in fifth. Um, to prove this next. Other discussion.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so yeah, we're just, just changing that, that bottom, but that page, I see a couple of places.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The bullets. Motion carries.
Thank you. Can we change all the bids that way? Going to board? Being received by five o'clock.
Yeah, just make that standard practice.
Every good idea needs to do.
Right.
All right, next is um vouchers. Um, and there were two packets of vouchers that you have. If I have a chance to.
Want to approve?
There's a motion in a second to improve the vouchers. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Um, and then we've got the plant brand agreement handed already and can start the vote.
The agreement, yeah, right, because Travis caught. So we, yeah, we had this on the ten. And there were two places where I believe uh forced, at least the, the language should have been four hundred and fifty second street and instead it said four hundred and sixty second street. And so I immediately emailed the relevant parties, the F H W A and S D D O T, and per them uh the just strike through and initial those two changes and they're fine. They consider them just uh minor typos, so that is a that was a good catch, um, and they really appreciated us bringing to their attention and having a document that didn't have any. Okay, so I would move to authorize the chair to sign um and make two amendments to Travis Scott um to the uh agreement.
There's a motion in second to let the chair sign. And and come up with two hundred fifty thousand dollars with no local to require for planning. And break the issue of resources. Any further discussion?
I just had a question on the Myron Grove River access enhancements, anything like Tony work. Are we looking, is this study gonna be to only have non-motorized floating access?
And it could improve, it could include improvements to motorized practices as well, but it seemed that figuring out a way to disentangle the two uses, that there's, there's infrastructure that's ideal for motorized craft put in. And there's infrastructures that's ideal for kayak put in. And when the two uses are combined, sometimes that can be less than ideal for both parties. So again, it was to see if there'd be, see what will be the most feasible and cost effective and probably supporting.
This will be unscathed property, because those river access points are state run.
Yeah, that's right. And so that, that was a discussion that I had with the you, what was supervisor then of the, of this stat history in South Dakota game, Mr. Parks, and he said that they're excited for us to go ahead and do the planning on that, so they don't spend it all.
I'm sure they are. That's, that's my problem, why we're spending money on their property.
Yeah, well, it's not money we would have were we not saying.
And it's, it's, it's essentially that would, that would be allocated toward improving access to the Missouri National Recreation River.
Well, we have to front them.
That, that's right, with a thirty day reimbursement.
Thirty day reimbursement from what, the completion of this study or?
So in my recollection of the agreement that we just approved and that the state will pay us us invoicing them for work that we, that we, so, so we would, we would pay for it. And then invoice the state and the state will pay us and then the state will go and get money back.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
And she carries. Then we've got R F P. Doing the action here. And that, that R F P has been a that's been a process. So the National Parks Service is.
So for, for, you know, just that big, you are many of, just a request for proposals, this would be we would not be performing any of this work in-house, we'd be getting to a best form to do that. So if we, and that work would be, you know, initially public input, that would be, that'd be core, so season basis, it would likely be in the room for those discussions, so that would be that'd be core to it. And then, and then from that, they would identify the most most publicly supported, cost effective and feasible conceptual designs that people, that they, people wanted to see more of and they would take it. That's kind of the, my attempt, instruction in the R F P was to, was to bring it. None of the, none of the money is available in this grant for any capital approvals, so nothing would come from these funds. Would, nothing imminent, they would be built using these funds, except for planning documents and that we hopefully would be able to use to secure additional funding in the future. Part of the R F P would be asking the consultant we hired to identify potential sources. That's, I think that everybody's on the same page and we don't have county money available to do, to do a lot of this quality of life work, but we've proven ourselves to be a county that can win a two hundred fifty thousand dollar planning grant based on this with no local match, so I think that this is the step towards, towards getting those.
Yeah, you, you don't get recreational. And having a plan in place, I'm especially excited about the migraines growth and click them in part sites. You know, I think the National Park Service is increasingly offering national park services, rangers, talks, campfires and stories. I mean, that park has still come alive, he's passed them. And, you know, I think there's some, there's the TV there that will make a big difference. I think that might you know, there's substantial land that you know, could be used to allow more people to spend time by the river. You know, years ago, like the plus or days, I did a ten focus groups with people in the region and one of, I was so surprised, it was one of the number one things that people love about living here is the river and most people express that doesn't matter to spend more time. And to have more, more river access, we, right now, we get click any part, we got a bench, we got a diesel, we got no, but we also have a parking lot right on the river. It, it might be that we want to turn that into, you know, in particular, a move for the waters. So I think, I, I think there's a lot that can be done. But you can't get anything done without the three M's. Even exciting.
I would move that we accept this R F P. Put it out for, for out of the wall.
Third second.
Second.
There's a motion in the second to approve our. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next is a revolution twenty twenty four dash twenty one for automatic budget supplements. And this is because Lake County's been reimbursed for disaster mitigation plan update in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred fifty dollars. So essentially, the budget supplement allows us to bring that into the budget and, and pay the bills. Oh, yeah, no, the, the actual change is five thousand, the actual supplement is five thousand eight hundred ninety one dollars, the amount we had at the end.
So we did actually pay the eleven thousand for the grant. The mitigation update, plan update. The budget ran short the five thousand and so because we got that eleven thousand back, I just was supplementing the five that it.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash one more, second.
So motion in seconds to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Which is resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty three, and that's the contingency transfer.
Do we have to do individual on that one period?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. That's listed, yeah, we don't call that.
Hammond.
Yes.
You leave?
Yes.
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 Alright, so twenty twenty four dash twenty three, provision and contingency transfer. And that's unanticipated expenses for the current budget year and this money will go from the commissioner to various departments. Is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
The motion in second to approve contingency transfer, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. I'll be sorry. Hammond.
Yes.
Yes.
And, yes, very long.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four, and that is a fund transfer from the general funds for twelve hundred fifty dollars to the highway fund and twenty five thousand to the emergency fund. Well, emergency management fund.
One one two.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. One million two hundred fifty thousand, thank you.
The budget transfers that we do under care, so nothing out of the ordinary there.
Move to approve, second.
Motion in second.
It's roll call.
Roll call. Hammond.
Yes.
Easy.
Yes.
Yeah, very long.
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to take responsibility.
Well, I'm just going by what it says.
You passed the torch.
Yes.
And let's see, Clay County Park, anything there?
No, nothing new at Clay County Park. I, there was a can't remember, are we on? Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, no, nothing new for Clay County.
Please don't be.
Been out of the meeting for a while, season and holidays.
Nothing on joint jurisdiction?
Nothing on joint jurisdiction. I did just get a message from Lane that saying that we're, on Thursday, we're to have a drone meeting. And I'm on that drone committee, but I would no longer be a commissioner at that point. And I
Who you are until next Tuesday.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We got another week.
Well, good.
Anything that happened.
Clarify, I want to clarify that, that I would be going to that meeting. Participate.
Any other commission reporting?
I had one to share, so the commission has invested in the P C D C's capital campaign. And I wanted to share that they are having a celebration, they're doing really well on getting close to their goal and I will, I'll check. It is the fifteenth of January. Fifteenth of January is going to be an annual meeting and celebration where they're going to be celebrating that, so we want to invite people and and thank the commission on behalf of the, the V C D C for, for the generous budget.
You said the fifteenth?
Yeah, January fifteenth. It's later afternoon, I I don't, don't have the agenda, so I'm not sure.
Any need for an executive session?
I think we should have one for legal.
For legal. Is there a motion to go into?
So move. Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Move to come out of the executive session for legal, second.
So motion in second to move out of the executive session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Motion to go back into executive session for personnel, second.
There is a motion and a second to go into executive session for personnel matters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Everybody.
Move to move to executive session, second.
The motion in the second to come out of executive session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Is there any other distance to me plus? There was some suggestion that you might, and this is not an actionable, this is not an action item, but employee appreciation pay.
Yeah, so I have reached out to Pizza Ranch a few times and haven't gotten anything back for available dates. And so I don't know if there's another place that we want to look at for that or.
How many, how many people do we need, do we plan for?
Probably eighty.
Eighty. Eagles would be fine, right? We used to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that like, do you have to cater that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll see you'll be the only other one here with the venue. We tried, we priced them one, they were very expensive, but we can try them again.
They were, I mean, I think they, at that time, I thought they had their theater and then you online and it was like close to thirty dollars a person.
I know the, the welcome team did their Thanksgiving dinner there and it appeared to me that it was Eagles, I thought it was Eagles folks in the kitchen preparing meals. I didn't, does Eagles do catering themselves? Can you order a?
Well, they do cooking, they do, they have steak nights and whatever else.
Yeah, I've gone down there.
Run to town.
The, the club members.
They rotate.
Yeah, they have people that, members that come in and volunteer to cook.
Believe that, yeah, to know who's cooking. We've normally had Mr. Smith's catering. At Eagles, so, oh my gosh, they did an easy, easy bunches. Awesome.
Awesome.
For this year's Lions Christmas party, that's what we did, yeah. That seems like a pretty nice download. And it's Mr. Smith's guy.
Anything else we need to?
Just want to thank Dick and Benny.
Yeah.
It's the last meeting.
Thank all of you, again, our crew here in the courthouse and out in Iowa, that really made my years easy, but, no, she was, this was easy, why would I quit? I did.
Eighty years flew right by, didn't it?
And it was really, it was a good, good experience for me. And I feel honored to have that. Thank you all, yeah.
I mean, a couple of years in, but this has been a great commission to serve on. I really appreciate that every, every single person's brought a lot of value, great questions, great observations, insights, creative solutions. And then a lot of really good, this good collegial attitude, so, yeah. You all.
And special appreciations of the staff, because I, you know, I mean, I worked in Illinois most of my life in one place or another. And this is an amazing staff. I'm just so impressed with every department and it's been a pleasure, a pleasure to serve. And staff was made it very, very, very easy. And thank you to all of you, the colleagues and and it has been.
Thank you all. And a special thanks to Kerry.
Kerry, the meeting. We get it done, even if, even if the email comes. Six o'clock at night. Sometimes later Kerry is still there working.
Our legal team's been good too, you know, and I got big shoes to fill. That's true, and thanks a lot. Yeah, well, and you guys, I appreciate that.
I especially appreciate the work you've done on the juvenile diversion, because I, I think that is my pottery and I, I, I think it's going to save the county. I'm so appreciative. Because it's gonna work.
It is, they keep working away on, at what they learned.
So is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
So motion in a second to adjourn. There is no discussion on a motion to adjourn, you're running through, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Happy New Year, everybody.